Good evening, everyone. I now call to order this meeting of Lancaster City Council for December 10th, 2024. A few reminders at the top of our meeting here. This is a good opportunity to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. These, this meeting and its participants are being recorded this evening. Tonight, there will be several opportunities for public comment during, during the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must begin with your name and block of residence for a meeting record. To keep time, the light here in front of me will turn green when the speaker begins. It will turn yellow when there is one minute remaining, and it will turn red when three minutes has been expended. I thank everyone in advance for helping make sure that everyone has equal time. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of numbers?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med.
Here.
Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Kleese.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
And President Baker.
Here.
Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the November 26th, 2024 meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Say again.
The motion and a second on the meeting minutes. Are there any council comments on them? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Kleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. I believe we have one of those this evening, resolution number 98, 2024. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Madam President. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, recognizing the recent passing from this life of Ron Ford, who served this city, and fellow residents as city councillor, city president, and Lancaster County Commissioner, in honoring his contributions.
Council President, if I may.
Councilor Med.
This resolution is going to be postponed to the January 14th meeting of council to allow Mr. Ford's family to be in attendance and other community members who are not able to be here this evening.
Thank you very much, Councilor Med. Mr. Harris, is there anything else administratively we need to do with that at this time?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and we look forward to welcoming the family here in January to give them that honor. That brings us to our first public comment period this evening. This is reserved for residents who have contacted the city clerk in advance to speak at the meeting. Again, as a reminder, speakers have three minutes, and it will be timed here in this light. Please begin your comments with your name and your block of residence for the meeting record. Do we have comments for this period, Mr. Harris?
We do. We have Tony Dastra.
Thank you.
Mr. Dastra, good evening. If you could just make sure that green light is on the microphones, and see the first one up. Thank you.
You got it. Tony Dastra, 757. Well, now that's on the record. 700 Block New Holland Avenue. Thank you for letting me talk. This is just to elaborate a little bit on that spreadsheet I gave out at the committee meeting, because I want to be clear that those are not hard and fast numbers. Like, it was a fastly put-together proposal using the data I had available, but I recognize that that's not the same set of data that the city has, and I'm hoping it gets looked at further. It's just supposed to be a conceptual document to demonstrate that I think that we can balance the city budget using a tax exemption still. My actually preferred number is 50% of the city's median income, which is roughly $30,500, so that number's a little high. And the rebate number, that could be flexed around, but I think the concept of a rebate is more of the argument I'm trying to make. Because the concern I have is, we've been speaking a lot about the benefits of home rule and how it can impact affordable living in Lancaster, but at the same time, there's no tax exemption in place for any of our residents based off income. So that means we are increasing the tax burden on all residents by an equal percentage. I think that we should be instituting a tax exemption for the people who are making 50% or less, and unfortunately, because of the state constitution, which I think all of us would probably agree needs amended in this regard, we, we can't do any other tax scaled rates, no, no scale tax brackets. So since we have to have a flat tax rate, what I'm proposing is a rebate program, so that way the people who are making roughly in the $30,000 to $70,000, $80,000 range, their tax burden is either also reduced or remains roughly the same when they get that rebate program check back. I recognize that administering a rebate program costs money, but I think that giving a tax break to lower middle-income residents is something we should all be striving for. So an exemption, I think, is very easy to do, and I think we can get it done. A rebate program, I recognize it takes some looking into, but I think it, I also believe that that needs to be an effort the city takes on. I have some ideas on that, but thank you for letting me speak on the issue. I just wanted to elaborate that that was a conceptual document. Those are not numbers to be looked at with serious gravity, just the concepts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dastra. I appreciate it.
Mr. Harris, do we have any speakers for this, any further speakers for this period?
We do not, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We will now move to our next item on the agenda, which is reports requested by council. We have none of those this evening, so we'll move to the next item, which is reports of committees of council. These committee meetings were held on December 2nd, 2024. We begin with the Public Safety Committee, Council Diaz.
The Safety Committee meeting met. I was not present. I was away with my family for the holidays. It was Resolution 92, 2024, increasing fees for towing license, and that will come up in the legislation agenda.
Thank you very much, Council Diaz. Public Works Committee, Council Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did meet on December 2nd, discussed two items, both of which appear on tonight's legislative agenda. The two items were Resolution 93, adopting the Park's Master Plan, and Ordinance Bill Number 15, appropriating ARPA funds for renovations to the Joe Jackson Top Line. And that concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Council Hirsch. Economic Development Committee, Councilor Med.
Thank you, Council President. The Economic Development Committee did meet. We discussed Bill Number 16, 2024, appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funds for revenue replacement in 2024, as well as Administration Bill, Administration Bill Number 17, 2024, appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funds for revenue replacement in 2025. And that concludes the report from the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Council Med. Finance Committee, Councilor Royo.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee did meet during the last session. We discussed two items, Administration Bill Number 13, 2024, which was setting the 2025 city sewer rates. That will be, that is on the agenda later this evening for the first reading, and Administration Resolution Number 97, 2024, which is setting the 2025 city trash and recycling fees. That will be voted on, on December 17. That resolution states that the rate will increase by 10% due to higher hauling and tipping fees from the Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you, Council Royo. Community Planning Committee, Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Our Community Planning did meet at committee meeting last week, and we had three items on the agenda, first being Administration Resolution 95, authorizing a letter of intent for planning and design of environmental center on the Sunnyside Peninsula. The second one being Administration Resolution 96, 2024, amending the official sewage facilities plan to include Price Elementary School project. And Administration Bill Number 14, reappropriating unused American Rescue Plan Act funds for city home repair program. All of those which will come up on the legislative agenda.
Thank you very much, Council Craig. And finally, the Personnel Committee, Council Kleese.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee did meet on Monday, December 2nd, and reviewed nominations for appointment and reappointment to the Lancaster City Housing Law, Traffic Commission, Planning Commission, and Zoning Hearing Board. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Council Kleese. We'll now move into our legislative agenda for this evening. The first item, item is nominations for appointment, and I will turn back to Council Kleese for those.
Thank you, Madam President. I make the motion to appoint Sharon Allen Spence to the Lancaster City Housing Law for a term from November 12, 2024, to November 30, 2028. Miss Phillip Stone Kennedy to the Traffic Commission for a term from December 31, 2024, to December 31, 2025. And reappoint Wesley Kenneth Wicks and Andrew Wesley Wallin to the Planning Commission for terms from December 31, 2024, to December 31, 2028. And John Holden to the Historical Commission for a term from December 31, 2024, to December 31, 2027.
We have a motion and a second for our appointments this evening. Are there any council comments on them? From the public. Mr. Dast.
Tony Dast, 700 Block New Holland Ave. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Stump Kennedy and get to know him a little bit, and I do think he's going to be a great addition to the Traffic Commission. But I wanted to come up here to speak about the other nomination, because I recognize that is an individual who's not fully in line with the city's current implementation of Vision Zero. However, I also remember the South End Concerned Neighbors being here in great frustration about the implementation around Ray's Temple, for example, and feeling kind of caught in the middle, because I recognize the state's statutory laws and I support enforcing them. But I also resonated with the residents who are like, whoa, this change is happening in our neighborhood, we're not comfortable with this, what's going on, dah dah dah. And I think Vision Zero can be implemented in a more inclusive way, frankly. The, the strategies we use in our local communities are sometimes perceived different in different areas, and I definitely recognize needing to vet someone further. I have not spoken with Ms. Reeves on that matter. I did not get her contact information admittedly. But I think it's important to have somebody with that sort of, just, she seemed eager to learn about the process, and that's why I asked her about raised intersections, because that is a very useful tool. We don't frankly use enough in the city, in part because they're expensive, but it also causes some issues for public works operations. The, the changes we make on our streets are important, and I recognize having some hesitancy in supporting Ms. Reeves' nomination, but given the history of specifically the southeast and these traffic improvements and Ray's Temple for just citing that issue, I think it's important to have somebody on the Traffic Commission who's not fully in line, because it's, it's the critiques of a system that allow it to improve. It's knowing where the pain points are that allows to figure out how to move forward, because I think the transportation revolution needs to be equitable, and having someone like her on the commission potentially. Again, I don't know her, I didn't have the chance to speak with her, but she seemed open, so I encourage you to look at someone else for this final nomination who's maybe a little off the current kilter. I, I think it would be good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dast. Any additional public comment on the nominations before us? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mrs. Royo.
Aye.
Mrs. Kleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on our legislative agenda this evening are historic district items. Mr. Harris, if you would.
Considering the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Architectural Review Board for improvements to properties within the historic district. First is Carly Snyder, owner of 126 East King Street. They request installation of fiberglass siding on two rear dormers. Second is Robert Hess, owner of 53 Howard Avenue, requests installation of rooftop solar panels. And both of those recommendations, recommendations, or both of those applications were recommended for approval by the Historic Architecture Review Board.
We have a motion and a second for both of the items, Council Craig?
Craig, thank you very much. Anything additional, Council Craig? I don't, I, I mean, they're pretty straightforward, and, you know, what they want to do is, is here, and they're already recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any additional council comments on the items before us? From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mrs. Royo.
Aye.
Mrs. Kleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. The next item on our legislative agenda are ordinances for first reading. I'm saying that so that I can remember, but that's what we're doing. The first is Bill Number 13, 2024. Mr. Harris.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, amending Section 2, 249, 29 of the Code of the City of Lancaster to increase sewer rentals for customers within the city limits by 12%, effective January 6, 2025, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Council Royo, anything to add for this one?
Nothing to add, Council President.
Thank you. Any council comments on the first reading this evening of this item? And from the public. Hearing none, this is a reminder that this will be taken up at our next meeting of council, which is going to be on December 17, 2024. Next item for first reading is Bill Number 14, 2024. Mr. Harris.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations of any American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2022, 2022, and previously awarded and allocated to non-city entities for community facilities programs and affordable housing programs, which are returned to the city unused for the purposes, purposes set forth in the grant agreement with the city, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Council Craig, anything to add on this one this evening?
Um, we went over this thoroughly at committee, as presented by, by Director Delph. This is a bill that will, Mr. Delph said, is just in case. And what it is meant to do is the adoption of this bill that money from, the money from funds from being returned to the US Treasury in case that the grant fees don't spend, you know, the amount that they're supposed to.
Thank you. And if my notes are correct here, they have until 2020, the end of 2026 to use those funds. And I believe Mr. Handwerker, the city solicitor, was also here before us at our committee meeting explaining that, well, this doesn't guarantee that we're going to be able to recoup those funds, it does give us a sort of an insurance policy based on what the federal government may decide to do. Any additional council comments on this bill for first reading? From the public. Mr. Dast.
Hello. Do I have to keep saying my address?
As a matter of course, yes.
Okay. 700 Block New.
I understand that follows the rules, so yes.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I do not have a problem with trying to make sure the ARPA dollars go unused. My only concern with allocating it to the home repair program, and maybe it can be expanded beyond that scope, is I believe the program has some paperwork requirements for residents, which sometimes get a little complicated and tedious and don't always follow through. I would encourage you to maybe expand this or change it to sidewalk repairs, because that's some infrastructure that homeowners are responsible for, and frankly, I, I think we could do better on enforcement and making sure sidewalks in the city are good. My cousin Ralph and I try to walk around, we walked in Neighbors United, and it took like a whole year and a half for one of my neighbors, even with citations, to finally repair their sidewalk. It would be wonderful if unused funds could be more like, hey, you gotta get your sidewalk fixed. Here's your violation. Oh, but by the way, city government has some extra ARPA dollars because a project went undone, so we're just going to take care of it for you. Sound good? Sound good? I just want to streamline the expenditure of those dollars as well to make sure they don't go unused, because if we are somewhat dependent on paperwork being submitted from residents and then getting, then not being able to apply and get approved for the program, we face the same problem of ARPA dollars going unused, and that's not good for our community. So not opposed to this, just hoping you will expand it to something that the city could take care of if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public for this first reading? All right, hearing none. Again, this will be taken up at our next meeting on December 17. Next item for first reading this evening is Bill Number 15, 2024. Mr. Harris.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations for $1 million of American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2022 to improve the Jackson Street Top Lot Park, provided for, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Council Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. Not much to say here, pursuing the point five income tax increase budget, a million dollars of ARPA that was initially scheduled for revenue replacement was ultimately freed up to be reinvested back into the community, and in this case, to go towards the Joe Jackson Top Lot renovations. And thanks to these funds, along with the $250,000 grant the city recently received from DCD, this will quicken up, hasten the timeline for the renovations to occur, and the city's hoping to complete these in 2025.
Thank you very much, Council Hirsch. Any council comments on the bill? From the public. All right, hearing none. Again, this will come up on our agenda on December 17. We'll be hearing that a lot this evening. The next item for first read is Bill Number 16, 2024. Mr. Harris.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations for $6 million of American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2022, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Councilor Med, this comes under economic development.
Thank you, Council President. As we discussed in the committee meeting, this is for the 2024 revenue replacement of $6 million, which is retroactively being appropriated during this budget process.
Thank you very much, Council Med. Yes, this was part of the budget that was passed last year. Any additional council comments on the bill? From the public. Mr. Dast.
Tony Dast, 700 Block New Holland Ave. Just wanted to say, I think I would be very much in support of that, more so if we're experimenting with tax exemptions and rebates, because I understand the complications of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public on the bill? Hearing none. This will come before us on the 17th. Next item for first reading this evening is Bill Number 17, 2024. Mr. Harris.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations of $2,400,000 of American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2022, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Councilor Med.
Thank you, Council President. Once again, we did go over this in our committee meeting. This is allocating the remaining $2.4 million for revenue replacement in 2025. Due to federal ARPA guidelines, we are doing this proactively rather than retroactively. Due to federal ARPA guidelines, we are doing this proactively rather than retroactively. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Counsel Med. Further council comments on this item? From the public on the first reading? Hearing none, we will take this up at our meeting on the 17th. And now we move on to our first reading bill number 18, 2024.
In ordinance of the City Council of the, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So the Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, confirming and directing that all ordinances of the City of Lancaster as codified in the Code of the City of Lancaster will remain in full force and effect to the extent the same are not inconsistent with the Home Rule Charter of the City of Lancaster. Upon the Home Rule Charter of the City of Lancaster taking effect on January 1, 2025, providing for the proper officers and officials of the City of Lancaster, be and hereby are directed to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate the provisions of this ordinance, providing that all of the appropriate officials and officers of the City of Lancaster be and hereby are authorized to direct and perform their duties in accordance with the Code of the City of Lancaster and the new Home Rule Charter of the City of Lancaster, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Counselors, this came before us in the committee of the whole last week. Mr. Handwerker was here to talk to us about it. This was recommended that we adopt by our consultants during the Home Rule process. It essentially is a safeguard to ensure that all of our ordinances and officers of the city remain in effect as we work to adopt all the necessary code changes in the Home Rule process, which, as you know, will take us through till the end of 2025. Are there any additional council comments on this item? From the public? Hearing none. Again, we'll take this up at our at our meeting on the 17th. I have lost my agenda. There it is, technology. All right, so that brings us to the next item on our agenda, item D, which is resolutions this evening. We begin with resolution number 90, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, reappointing Christopher O'Adliss, 611 High Street, as a member of the City of Lancaster zoning hearing board for three year, for a three-year term effective January 1, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. So this resolution was reviewed by counsel at our last committee meeting, and it is pretty straightforward. Mr. Adliss is a covered member on the zoning hearing board, and he has expressed his interest to be reappointed, so the resolution is reappointing him for a three-year term effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you very much, Counsel Cleese. Any additional council comments on the reappointment? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Next item in the resolution is resolution number 91, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, reappointing Kevin M. Ember, 334 East Chestnut Street, as an alternate member to the City of Lancaster zoning hearing board for a three-year term effective January 1, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the reappointment. Counselor Cleese, anything to add on this one?
Thank you. I don't have much to add. This resolution was also reviewed by counsel at our last committee meeting, and Mr. Ember is also a city resident, and he is a current member of the zoning hearing board. So this resolution is, we are appointing him for, as an alternate member of the board.
Thank you very much. Any council comments on the reappointment? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
That brings us to administration resolution number 92, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, modifying the annual license fees for towing license issues in accordance with 285-139 in the Code of the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Diaz.
The purpose to this resolution, it's basically to update the annual towing license fees to better align with the city's administration costs and the implement of the per towing fee structure. Existing fee, flat annual fee is 700 with no pre-tow fee currently charged. Currently cost analysis, the fee equal to $40 to $4 per towing. Actually administrative cost per tow is 1988. The purpose change will be annual, flat fee remains at 700 with the additional of $10 per tow. And the reason for changing is raising costs due to new technology, the increased per tow expense of 2654. Fee adjustment helps cover the administration costs. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much, Counsel Diaz. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Our next item is resolution number 93, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, adopting the comprehensive park recreation and open space plan to guide future development, design, programming, and operations and maintenance of the City of Lancaster parks and recreation facilities and open spaces.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. As you heard, the comprehensive parks recreation and open space plan provides very general guidance on future development, design, and programming offered at the city's parks, viewing them as a network of parks rather than as individual parks that serve the city. Included in the plan is the idea that all city residents would be within a 10-minute walk of a high-quality park. The plan sets priorities for where future funding and planning efforts are directed and on the general timeline, or really tiering of where the priorities are, including opportunities for more active recreation in the city, possibilities around the addition of escape park, pickleball courts, basketball courts, and our new community pool, as discussed in an earlier meeting specifically relating to the master plan for the Conestoga Pines Park. The Public Works Department has worked diligently on this plan, and over the last year and a half has also had the assistance of a roughly 16-member community working committee as well. So a lot of stakeholder engagement and engagement with residents went into this plan, like many other plans that the city puts together.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hirsch. I just want to thank our Public Works Department for endeavoring on this master plan, all of the people that worked to put it together. It is ambitious, it is fairly comprehensive, and as a guiding document, I think it's important to note that, you know, we may reach all of the things that are in the plan, we may reach just some of those things that are in that plan, but the goal is to increase the engagement in our parks, the use of our parks, the quality of our parks, and I think that that is important, as noted by, you know, some of the things we've already talked about are committing of dollars to our parks. So for that reason, I believe it's important that we pass this this evening. Any additional council comments on this resolution? From the public? Mr. Dash.
Tony Dash, 700 Block New Holland Avenue. The nice thing about plans is that they are living documents. So I totally am in support of approving this document as it is. But much like, I hope we see amendments to the comprehensive plan as we grow as a city, continue to move forward. I think Mr. Reed made a really good point at the last committee meeting, that skating should have a little bit more priority in the City of Lancaster. There are a lot of skateboards in the street, and that is a safety issue. So, totally recognize the need to get this adopted and move forward with it, but I hope that this plan is revisited and some additions be made in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. Additional comments on the resolution from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz. Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is resolution number 94, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, approving a flag raising on February 27, 2025 to acknowledge Dominican Independence Day, brought forth by the Dominican Association of Lancaster.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselors, this came before us in the committee of the whole at our last meeting. Our Neighborhood Engagement Department brought this forward. Our Dominican Association wishes to do a flag raising at City Hall, and I support them in doing that. That is an annual event for them, and I hope that you and the members of the public will join them on that date. Any additional council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Our next item this evening is resolution number 95, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lancaster to enter into a letter of intent for master site design and or small area plan for an environmental center and nature preserve at the Sunnyside Peninsula in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, with Partners for Environmental Stewardship, and to take any and all actions to consummate the transactions contemplated by the letter of a ten and attached term sheet.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Craig.
Thank you, Council President. As presented by Director Delft and Diana Martin on the second or the third at a committee meeting, the city's comprehensive plan adopted last year called for a nature preserve anchored by, and, and, at, a nature preserve anchored by an environmental center on the Sunnyside Peninsula. In November 2023, the city issued a request for proposal to develop the preserve and environmental center. One response was received from Partners for Environmental Park Stewardship, an organization sponsored by the High Foundation. Ms. Martin, Executive Director of Partners for Environmental Stewardship, called for a project transformation, called the project transformational for the peninsula. She also noted that the opportunities for workforce, environmental training, recreation, and community engagement. And I know there are several people here, so if there are any questions for further concern, I'm sure they'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Counsel Craig. I also know that you were very excited about this item in our committee meeting, particularly developing on the Sunnyside Peninsula, which has been a very long time coming. Counsel, I'll take any comments from counsel, and if there's any additional questions, I know that our Partners for Environmental Stewardship folks are here and would be happy to address them. Comments from counsel? I'll take any comments from the public? Mr. Dash.
Because I am, Tony Dash, 700 Block New Holland Avenue, because I am extending the amount of time you guys are here, I just want to publicly acknowledge how I'm looking forward to this project. And if at any point you need a letter of support for any grant applications, I would be happy to write a letter of support, because I know public letters of support can go a long way in this. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. Any additional comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men. Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please. Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Thank you. And I believe our last resolution this evening, resolution number 96, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act 537 official sewage facilities plan for the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Craig.
Thank you, Council President. If this looks familiar, it's because we did it before. But this resolution was approved by council last month, but our approval came before the Lancaster County's approval. So we had that paddle just a little bit, because the county must approve the planned amendment before the city. So that's why we're here now.
Thank you very much for that explanation, Counsel Craig. Are there any additional comments from council on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mrs. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Biggitt.
Aye.
Thank you. If I'm playing along correctly at home, I think we've reached the end of our legislative agenda for this evening, which will all take us to our second public comment period. This is open for comments on that issues that were not on the agenda. Jury's comments is again limited to three minutes per speaker. If there's anyone who wishes to make a public comment, you can come forward now. Mr. Dash.
Tony Dash, 700 Block New Holland Avenue, just bringing this all full circle to affordability in Lancaster. So, before Home Rule passed even, there's never been a preemptive law, or I shouldn't say never, but there is not a preemptive law on rent control in Pennsylvania. And frankly, things are getting unwieldy. This is not an issue that impacts me. I own my home, or at least the bank owns it, and I pay them. It, I'm so glad I took that risk many years ago, because I can't imagine what it would be like. I probably wouldn't be here as a city resident if I hadn't taken that chance. I think this is something we need to work on. I understand that will require larger community conversations, because we do have landlords in the city who own, who are, they live in the city. But there's also corporate landlords who do nothing but extract the wealth from our community and take it to other communities. Rent control is something I know some people in this room care about. We should not do it hard and fast. I'm not coming here to be like, I want rent control, and then next month we have a rent control ordinance. We do need to have a conversation about it, because it will impact some of the local landlords who, I think there are local landlords who really do care about their community members. But it's something we should work on in 2025. It shouldn't wait until 2026. So I'm hoping that in 2025, this council considers drafts of rent control, and we can get something done so that going forward, we can really say that we are working on affordability in Lancaster and set the bar for Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. Are there any further comments for this public comment period? All right. Hearing none, we will close the public comment period. The next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor. Mayor Srachi could not be here this evening. She did not leave a report with me, so we will move on then to the report of the President of Council. My report this evening is brief. I'd just like to highlight some upcoming events. We've talked about our upcoming council meetings, but some events in the city for the holiday season. Lancaster shops late occurs on this Friday, December 13, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please support our local businesses that will be staying openly to help people do their holiday shopping. The menorah lighting in Penn Square will happen each evening, December 21. The menorah lighting in Penn Square will happen each evening, December 21st through January 1st, and all are welcome for that. And our New Year's Eve celebration is back this year. It will be at Clipper Magazine Stadium. We'll be dropping the rose December 31st. Please join us from eight to midnight. That concludes my report this evening, and I will now open it up to any counsel comments before we conclude. If I may, President. Counsel Diaz.
I don't know who enters the information regarding the time for meetings, but there was a mistake where it showed that the council committee meeting was at 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, whoever is entering, they should look at that, because that's going to confuse people, not knowing that you can't start something and end it at the same time.
Was that on the calendar invites that were sent today, Counsel Diaz?
On our website, yes.
Okay. The calendar invites are sent by me, and I will have Mr. Harris double-check the website. Was it for each of them, or for today's, or the next one, or just?
It was last, it was last Monday.
Last Monday.
Yeah, because I got, I got questioned about it, and that I know of, I haven't really looked at the other ones, so.
Okay. We will endeavor to check on those. Any additional counsel comments this evening?
Madam President, I'd be per free to address the special meeting number 23rd.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that reminder. I wasn't sure if that had gone out officially. I will make an announcement now, and it has been advertised, there will be a special meeting of council on December 23rd. Is it 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
At 6:00 p.m. here in this room to consider an item regarding ARPA funds. We needed to get it in before the end of the year. Timing is very important, as you may know, with allocating ARPA funds needing to be done before the 31st. So, our meeting on the 17th will not be our final meeting of the year, but that special meeting will occur, and that will be our final meeting of the year. Counselors, you will get some information about that tomorrow. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Any additional counsel comments before we conclude? All right. Hearing none, and having reached the end of our agenda, I'll hear motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.